The special meeting of May 20th, 24th for the Wichita Board of Education is now in order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready with the greater community. We do have all seven board members here today. If you please join me in a moment of silence. Would you please, thank you, please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Joseph, first item, please. And there is no one signed up, correct?
No.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Noc, do you have any consent items to pull?
Nothing to pull.
Hazel?
Nothing to pull.
I have no consent items to pull. Diane?
Nothing to pull.
Melody?
Nothing.
Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Kathy?
Nothing to pull.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Stan and seconded by Julie. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Joseph, next item, please.
Next item, operations, BOE calendar.
This is actually going to be a first read of the calendar. This is not the final adoption, is that my understanding? Is that understand, I mean, is that correct?
That's correct. And this is the, kind of, the first read at the regular evening monthly scheduled board meetings that we have. As we talked about at the, at the last workshop, we're, we're looking at embedding some other workshops periodically throughout the year. So, we wanted to kind of start here as our minimum. This is our, kind of, our baseline for our regular meetings. If these dates look good to everybody, we're, we're pretty much going with first, first Monday of the month, except when we have the budget things to do in August, that'll be a little bit different. So, if we're good with this at a first pass, we'll, next time around, we'll embed some of the workshop dates to see what we think of those, and then, so that would be June 10th meeting. And then, final approval of the, of the BOE calendar would be at the June 27th meeting for the next year. But really, the July date's kind of the big important one, because we want to make, we want to get that on the books now. If, if everyone's good with that July 29th date, we'll, we'll kind of start planning around that one. So, yeah. I can quit talking.
I don't know, that's, that helps explain it. Are there any suggestions to the BOE first draft of the meeting calendar? If not, we'll move that forward for, to layer on other things in the final adoption for a later date. Patrick, next item, please.
Joseph.
Joseph. I had to get that in there once. Once a meeting.
Next item, under operations, legislative update.
Kelly, go ahead.
Sure. So, we have invited Sean Miller from Capital Strategies to come present today to give you guys a recap about the legislative session. A lot of this, we've, we've been discussing and have talked about through, through our meetings. Susan's brought up some things. But there'll be some things today that I think maybe you weren't aware of that got passed that will affect us too. So, we've asked Sean specifically to talk about our, our legislative platform that we passed in January and how successful or unsuccessful we were on some of those items. So, I'll let Sean take it away.
Welcome, Sean.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, everybody. My name is Sean Miller. As Dr. Beilefeld said, I am with Capital Strategies. We are a contract lobby firm in Kansas, up in Topeka, and we have actually worked with the district essentially since Diane Gerstad retired. You have probably seen Bill Brady before come here and present. He was my partner. Unfortunately for many of us, he passed away unexpectedly last March, and so I have been the lead with Wichita 259 since that time. So, are they seeing this? I mean, I'm, I'm not, so, okay. So, I hope you have my slides in front of you. I put together a little bit of a presentation just to keep you on your toes. I'm going to keep, I'm going to go a little bit backwards on the very first slide here. Kind of put together just a little bit of a legislative overview. For those of you who don't live the Topeka world, and Ms. Albert and I already had this discussion this morning, I usually see her up there. It's much more pleasant to see you all here. No offense to the former legislators in the room, Representative McCray Miller, but it's nice to be away from the Capitol just a little bit. But just to give you a little bit of an idea of what we do, right? We are looking at the Kansas House and the Kansas Senate. You will hear us up there a lot talk about 63, 21, and 1. That means that in order to pass a bill, we need 63 House members, one more than half, 21 senators, one more than half, and the governor's signature. So, we have 125 House members, we have 40 senators, and then of those, we have really a number of committees that we look through and highlight. We'll talk about those just here in a minute. And we run a 90-day session every single year. So, we start the second Monday in January. Please don't look at a calendar and compare that. 90 days, somehow, we make that run from January all the way through May, usually with breaks and, and different pauses that we put in the session. And we really divide that into three sort of sections, right? The first half of the session, when we get up to what we call turnaround runs, essentially all of January and February. We hit the turnaround deadline, and that literally is the deadline by which all of the House bills need to have made their way through the House, turned around and headed to the Senate, and vice versa in the Senate. All the Senate bills need to have made their way through committee, through the floor, have turned around and headed their way towards the House. Then the second half of the session is really the month of March. We bleed that into a little bit of April, but that is when the House needs to consider all the Senate bills, the Senate needs to consider all the House bills, and then ideally those bills will head towards the governor or will begin to what we call conference. Thank you very much. Sorry for a little pause there. And then finally, the, the very end of it is what we typically call veto session. So, we leave the first week in April, we take a three-week break for two reasons. Number one, all of the bills that we passed have to get sent to the governor. The governor has 10 days to consider those, sign, veto, or allow those to become law without their signature. But also, we get our annual consensus revenue estimates in there. So, we, twice a year, we true up our state budget, if you will. We thought in November, we were going to get, you know, a billion dollars. We come in April, we go, oh, we only got 800 million. Or, if we're lucky, we say we got 1.2 billion. Do we put that in the, the bank? Do we put a little bit more money into healthcare, into schools, or do we cut taxes? We make those kinds of decisions. And then, we'd make those decisions during what we call veto session. This year, veto session was only three days long. We did not, we did override a number of vetoes, we didn't make a significant amount of changes, and we adjourned sine die. Nice, fun Latin phrase for means we really, really done, right? We're gone. We're done for the year. The reason I flipped this slide and did it backwards is later today or tomorrow, the governor will announce that likely June 10th, or sometime the week of June 10th, we will have a special session. That special session is going to be focused on taxes. We have passed now, over the last biennium, four different tax plans that have been vetoed. The three that we passed this year that were all vetoed were all really similar. And so, we're going to come back and take one additional stab at taxes. The reason I bring that up, we're here to talk about education today and not taxes, is because the governor can say, we're going to come back on June 10th, I'm making that up, she hasn't announced it yet, and we're going to talk about taxes. She does not have the authority to limit them to just taxes. They can talk about the budget, they can talk about education, they can talk about anything they want to. We believe they will keep the focus pretty tight on taxes. And the reason we believe that, every one of you at that table, except for Dr. Beilefeld, have gone, stood for election, this is an election year, and they cannot fundraise while they are in session. So, if they really want to let things get off the axle and stick around for two or three weeks, their opponents will be at home talking about why are they in special session spending your tax dollars and making headlines every day. So, they're going to want to get in, they're going to want to get out, they're going to want to get back on the campaign trail and back to raising money again. So, I think it's likely just to be a one-to-two-day session, if I had to guess. Again, just a little bit of quick background, here's sort of the key committees that we really watch. There are 20 to 30 policy committees in, in each House, but appropriations and ways and means, which are our budget committees, the education committees, which are our policy committees, obviously, the K-12 education budget. In the House, they do standing budget subcommittees. It's a 21-person committee, whereas in the Senate, they just have a three-person little budget subcommittee. And then, public health and elections always impact us as well, because it, it determines how your constituents can vote for you, when you need to file, what you can do for campaigns, those sort of things. And anytime you have 40,000-plus students, the health committees come in pretty, pretty important on us as well in terms of dictating what sort of healthcare initiatives we have, what side of mandates we have, those, those kinds of things. So, those are the committees that we really watch on a daily basis. In typical, we have somewhere between 500 and 750 bills introduced every year. I think this year, we were just north of 600, and we had, I think, 1,300 bills introduced over the two-year biennium. When we adjourned April 30th, April 30th Legislative Day, it was really about 1:00 a.m. on the first of May, all of those bills that didn't pass are now dead and gone. So, next year will be a new biennium, we will start all over again. But we watched a number of bills this year, probably 50 or 60. I really focused today just on the ones that ultimately made it across the finish line. So, if there's questions that you have about some of them that didn't make it, we testified on a number that either didn't, didn't make it all the way through the process or combined into something else. But these were the bill packages that actually came out and passed this year that I wanted to bring to your attention. I know some of them you're well aware of, others you may have a few questions about. As you look here, and it says Senate Bill 19, and then underneath it, you see the House Bill 2494, House Bill 2567. We, it's becoming more and more common now that we will pretty typically bundle four, five, or six bills together in a package, either in committee or in conference committee as we hash out the House and Senate positions in these issues. So, those were essentially the underlying bills that we would have run through the House. They either never made it through the Senate, or the Senate changed them so substantially that we had to come to some kind of middle ground agreement, and then they were packaged together in some shell vehicle. That shell vehicle may or may not have had to do anything with education. It may have started off as a bill about, I mean, you name it, water rights, and then suddenly it became an education bill. And in many cases, we will take those underlying bills and we will change them fairly substantially. So, we get to the next big blueprint, sorry, the next slide, and you'll see a little till day out beside of them. That means that the closest approximation to point you in the direction is a bill that would have been that bill, but it's been substantially changed. So, House Bill 2494 is one of the ones we watched. It came out of the House Education Committee. Originally, it was a very prescriptive definition of cardiac plans, okay? So, it would have required a specific number of AEDs within every school building in the state. They brought together a working group on that, and they said, you know, in building A, we might only need two AEDs, where in building B, we might need 40, and the bill calls for 11. Like, how do we work around that? Ultimately, the plan was that KDHE is going to develop some safety protocol. They're going to figure out what the right number of, of cardiac response plan, AEDs, the other materials that might be needed, and they are going to push that out to the State Board of Education for schools to look at that. So, that is one of the bills that we looked at this year. Senate Bill 438 became a mega scholarship bill, but really, the reason that I put it here is for, you'll see below, Senate Bill 532, the blueprint for literacy. The Board of Regents and the State Board of Education have been working on the blueprint for literacy for quite some time now to interject the science of reading and training of teachers on the science of reading. That started as Senate Bill 532, there was a mirror bill in the House. Ultimately, it was packaged together within Senate Bill 438. It, it requires some sort of back and forth between the Board of Regents and the State Board of Ed to develop a plan to roll out teacher training and education for the blueprint of literacy, and then a multi-year phase-in for that to be trained and for teachers within the state of Kansas to receive that training and begin to teach the science of reading in their schools. Now, we're hitting into some bigger bills, right? Senate Bill 73, I would put is probably the second most important bill that we looked at this year. It started originally as either Senate Bill 386 or House Bill 2485, and it changed the enrollment year count for schools. Most of you know currently that we can either look at last year's enrollment of our school district or the prior year's enrollment of our school district, either one year back or two year back, and that is the, that is going to determine the amount of funding that we get for this next year. If you go back about seven or eight years ago, it was actually current year. And at the time, our appropriations chair did not like current year, because what had to happen, May of this year, we would pass a budget, next September, you would take your enrollment count, and then when they came back, so in May of this year, I have to pass a budget that guesses how many, how many students Wichita is going to have next September. Well, next September, we're under by 300 students, so when the legislature returns in January, they have to make adjustments for all 286 school districts out there, what we would call caseload adjustments. That means they have to add $15 million to this school and subtract $3 million from this school, and they hated it. They did not like the uncertainty. So, they moved, instead of current year, they moved back and said, we'll look back at two previous years, so we can pick a number, we'll know exactly what that number is, we'll fund it, and then next year, if you have more or less students, you can figure out as a local board how to deal with those discrepancies. But the legislature didn't want to have to do those caselots. Well, what we've seen a little bit over the last few years is some schools that are in a declining enrollment posture have been receiving money for what later, we'll talk about it, what they call ghost students up there. You got money for 15 students in a small school district that now go to the next small school district, and that neighboring school district that accepted them can't get the money. So, they started looking at those local fights, and they said, okay, we don't like the two-year look back anymore, it's not current enough information, we want to move to current year enrollment. For a really big district like 259, like 500, like 501, that sees some year-to-year change, that could lead them tens of millions of dollars underfunded, one year to the next. And so, what they ultimately did is we said, okay, we're going to move to current year count as following September, right? Or the immediate previous year count, and then that puts schools with a pretty significant declining enrollment in, in a posture where they were going to lose a lot of money for a one-year period there. So, what we did is we tried on the floor, Senator Elaine Bowers, who's a Republican from Concordia, who represents a lot of rural districts who are declining enrollment in districts by and large, they said, we're okay, we can deal with the private, the prior year school count, but we need a little bit of a runway to make these changes, right? 259's a perfect example, we just signed two-year teacher contracts, we've made our plans, our budget based on a two-year enrollment count, now you want to move us a little bit more current? Give us a little bit of runway so we can make that adjustment, so we don't have to make really hard calls, potentially hiring or firing people who we've already told they have a job. And so, they did. On the floor of the Senate, they adopted a bill that said for one year, this is your runway, for one year and one year alone, instead of using current or prior year, you can use current year, you can use prior year, or you can use the average of prior or two years back. So, that is, is kind of a split the middle a little bit. It gives you a little bit more money than you probably would have had if you were forced to move to current or prior year, and it gives you one year to know exactly where you're going to land in '24, '25, '26, right? And so, that's where we, we were. We worked with Senator Bowers and some other folks on the floor with that to help explain to them the exact rationale, show them runs on how it would impact all of the 286 districts. The House also had a plan that would have just pressed the pause button for one year, so you would still be one year back or two years back, knowing that in '25, '26, you were going to have to make the jump. That was pretty punitive to growing districts though, right? Gardner Edgerton up in the Johnson County area, who had grown by a couple of hundred students, was not going to get that money for another year. So, they were going to be forced to make hard decisions on how do we educate an extra hundred kids without any extra money. And so, I thought this was a pretty good middle ground that we worked on, and ultimately, everybody came to consensus on that piece. So, knowing in '25 and '26 thereafter, we're going to have either current year or prior year school count, that's going to be a big issue for us. Senate Bill 339 is one of the very last bills that we passed and packaged together, and that deals with the ghost students that we just discussed. There are a couple of schools out there, rural schools, who have looked at doing some consolidating that has pushed kids that were on the edge of their already pretty big regional district, and it's pushed them into the next district. This one is sort of the epitome of the issue. There is a school in west-central Kansas who, as of next year, was going to have no enrolled and intending students within their district. There were a couple of kids potentially who were non, out of, non-resident, out-of-district students who still wanted to go to this school, but they were, they were going to be enrolled but not attending. Theoretically, this school still could have gotten money even though they had no students. And so, this is something that was going to allow them to sort of wind down the school district, if you will. This is an issue, unfortunately, that we're seeing more and more in western Kansas, as you see declining enrollments, is more consolidation, more issues of, this school district this past year had 19 students K through 12. Not, not 19 NK and N12, 19 K through 12. So, you can see how they began to look at, how do we run a transportation program? If I've got to go 40 miles that way to pick up one kid, 30 miles that way to pick up another kid, it, financially, it's really difficult. And that's a hard community decision as well, right? House Bill 2669 was a bill on the mental health intervention team, what we call M-HIT, a really big program here within the Wichita district. We were one of the original pilot program schools for this district, or for this particular program. It has been a proviso in the budget every year since it existed, which means in theory, it only has a one-year lifespan. It's got to get renewed every single year. This year, they looked to take the mental health intervention team and memorialize that permanently within the Department of Disability and Aging Services. So, KADADs is what we call it. Move it out of the State Department of Ed, move it to KADADs. It also would have changed pretty significantly the cost share of this program. So, currently, Wichita participates in this. Of the, the staff members that we have, about 75% of that funding comes from the state, about 25% comes from the district. This bill would have changed that 75, 25 to a 50-50. Would have been a pretty significant hit to the local district. The governor, for two reasons, but one of them was the funding piece, line item vetoed that out of the original budget. So, in Senate Bill 28, it was in there, she line item vetoed it out of Senate Bill 28. When we came back for the omnibus, we packaged together the omnibus budget, which was 2551, it was reconstituted, she fixed one of the policy provisions that she had a concern with, and the, and ultimately, through some negotiations, they settled on a 65-35 split. So, again, not the 75-25 it was, but we hopefully helped move the needle on this a little bit. I think that was probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars to our bottom line that was saved there in that, in that particular provision. So, now we get into the mega bill. I'm going to try not to get too bogged down in it, because we put together about nine different bills into this bill, and Senate Bill 387. As has kind of become more regular the last six or eight years, we combined the budget with a fairly significant amount of policy, and so, let me hit the highlights of Senate Bill 387, what we call the K-12 funding bill. First and foremost, it has full constitutional funding based on GANON. So, it has the full CPI and the entire amount of funding that's required to be in there. That's a really positive thing for school districts. The second thing, and this was a real rallying point for a lot of folks, but it was also a big negotiating piece, is it does add about $75 million in new special education funding to the budget. That's a blend of about $7.5 million that was included in last year's budget for next year, $65 million that was added in for this year, and then another about $2.5 million of ARPA funds. We still have a little bit of COVID ARPA money floating around out there, and so they put that money in. The reason that I toss that out is the ARPA funds will, will be put in with the regular 500-plus million dollars in special ed funding that's distributed across the state and distributed by the normal formula. The $73 million in new monies will be distributed by a new formula that will have to be approved by the State Board of Education. It is not dictated by this legislation how that money is to be distributed out. It just simply says, it can't be the old formula. It's got to be something that's a little bit more equalized across the state. For anybody who watched, got a little peek last week, the State Board of Ed, Dr. Frank Harwood talked about a potential methodology, and it is essentially what I would call, and I think what he's calling the local, local effort model. So, if you take a look at all 286 school districts, how much money are they currently taking from their state, from their local general fund and transferring over to special education to backfill those requirements? If you take those amounts and then you divvy up the new $73 million proportionally, that is likely, I think, what we're going to see. At their June State Board of Education meeting, they will receive an official recommendation and will act on that official recommendation at that time. So, you might want to ping your calendar for the June State Board, because that's going to determine how that new $73 million gets distributed out to local USDs. A couple of things that it did not do, you see my till day there next to House Bill 2738, they made significant changes to the original policy bill. That original policy bill would have required each and every school district to take the amount of LOB that is generated at the local level that was attributable to the state portion of special ed funding that they received, and consider that state special ed funding. So, even though it's local tax dollars derived locally, they would count that as state dollars. That was not done. That was, that was left on the cutting room floor. But what they do require is for you to take whatever that amount is locally and move that from your general fund over into your special education account. Different schools felt differently about that. They didn't really like being told what to do, but currently, every school district in the state spends more money on special education than that transfer would be required. So, you will likely still have to backfill some from your, from your local general fund. The second major piece that was in there is the high-density and at-risk piece, that would have been found in House Bill 2650 originally. That requires you as a district to come up with and select two cohort groups between third and eighth grade, and then apply a certain specific set of either two to four interventions that meet their at-risk needs, and then track them for four years. It would also require you as a local board to set a goal of improvement for that cohort group. The part where really a lot of people got frustrated was if they did not meet your locally set goal in four years, you would lose any future funding increases to your at-risk. So, if, if there was going to be a 5% increase in your at-risk funding next year, and you didn't meet those local goals over four years, you would lose the 5% increase. You'd still keep your base funding, but you would lose the 5% increase. They amended that to add on a fifth year, like one final time for you to, to meet the goal, and then ultimately, in conference committee, what they did is said, okay, let's, let's do a two-year pilot program to figure out how this is going to work, how it's going to be implemented, what the problems are, before we launch into something that could potentially cost districts some funding. And so, that's where we're at right now. KSDE is going to pick 10 districts randomly. They want them to try to approximate the various school districts across the state, so growing suburban schools, maybe an urban school, some declining rural schools, and then for two years, have them do this pilot program, pick the cohort groups, apply the interventions, track how things are going, and in those first two years, those are free years, right? Those don't count against you if you don't meet your goals. But then, beginning three years from now, every school district in the state is going to have to do this, and theoretically, in 2030, '31, that would be the end of your fifth year, if you have not met your goals, you would potentially lose your at-risk funding increases. So, it's going to be a really key thing for us to watch the next two years, how it works, how it doesn't work. I assure you, there'll be a lot of, a lot of policy discussions about this piece moving forward. There were a number of other pieces. I don't want to call these rats and cats, because they were important pieces, but these are much smaller, and I'll go through them much quicker than the ones that were on the previous page. House Bill 2506 was a virtual school bill. Essentially, last year, we said if you are a non-public school resident student, right? You're going to a private school within the boundaries of 259, 259 has to allow you to participate in any CASHA activity. This year, we took that a step further and said that if you are a virtual student, maybe you're going to a virtual school in Elkheart, Kansas, but you live in Wichita, Wichita 259 has to allow you to participate in CASHA activities. The one exception to that being, if you are required to take a class in the district in order to participate, band is the one that always gets brought up, you're required to be in band class, to be in the band, then you cannot participate if you're fully virtual. You have to be at least in that band class. And that leads us into the next piece. As we discussed that, and we said, okay, we have virtual students within the, within the Wichita footprint, if we make them take a band class, under the current statute, we get, I think I had 5,800 up there, it's 5,600, apologize for the typo, $5,600 for a virtual school student. But the second they become non-full-time, if they are a 90% virtual student, that 5,600 gets cut in half to 2,800, and then we multiply that by .9. So, if you take one credit at a brick and mortar school, your funding for Wichita 259 drops from 5,600 all the way down to about 2,500. We fixed this this year as well. This was a big point of contention for us. We said, look, if virtual school student funding is 5,600 per student and you're 90% virtual, why do we cut you in half and then multiply? percent virtual, why do we cut you in half and then multiply by point nine? Why don't we just multiply by point nine? So if you're a halftime virtual school student, it makes sense for you to get twenty-eight-hundred dollars. But if you're ninety percent, it does not make sense for you to be. So that is one of the big, I think, improvements and things we pushed for this year. I think that was a nice win. There's another virtual program audit there for adult virtual learners. That was really sort of one or two school district issue to get dealt with. And then open enrollment. You're all very aware, I'm sure, of the open enrollment policy that was passed a couple of years ago and then tweaked last year. Every time we fix one thing, it's just kind of a legislative thing. This is what happens, whether it's in DC or Topeka or Austin, or when we fix one thing, we kind of goof up something else. And last year, when we fixed the enrollment piece, we messed up some other things. Unintended completely, but let's say that Sean Miller's student kids started, they live in Andover, but they went to school in two-five-nine because I work in Wichita and I wanted to drive them in. They started as a kindergartner. Now, next year, they're going to be a senior and they're going to play football with their senior class. When we fixed the open enrollment piece that we had messed up last year, we actually deleted anything in there that allowed current non-resident enrollees to stay. So in theory, you would have had to have kicked out every kid that was a non-resident that had not gone through the lottery, even if they'd been in Wichita schools for eleven years. You'd have to say, sorry, I know all your friends are here, your teammates are here, you got to go. That was not what the legislature intended, so we fixed that. We also sort of reprioritized the lottery system a little bit. We have a lot of students on the borders where perhaps students from Missouri would have gotten priority over students from the, you know, one town over in Kansas. And so we made Kansas students have some priority within the lottery. And then for the board policy, this is probably a pretty big one for you. As you're looking at setting your capacities within the schools and looking at taking students from out of district, you may have had a student who was deemed not in good standing in another school district, got kicked out of that school, expelled, wanted to come to two-five-nine, still had all of the same issues, but you had to let them into school through the lottery process before then you could then expel them. Well, now you have the ability to look at the student's background, what had happened, where they were academically, maybe legally, and you could deem students not in good standing prior to ever allowing them to enroll within the within the school district. It does have a parent appeal process. That appeal is back to the board that had already deemed them in not good standing, but it allows them to at least present some additional information on why that perhaps was not the appropriate decision in the first place. The other big thing, last year, essentially, we would have had these non-resident students apply and enroll in July. That makes it really hard to plan short-term now. The application window is January one to June fifteenth. So you could start getting applications in January, February, March. You'd have a better idea at the local district whether you would or wouldn't have room within those various buildings. And you could set your new goals or close the school appropriately. Meanwhile, the students would also have a better idea, you know, June, where they actually might have the opportunity to go, as opposed to applying to a bunch of schools where there was not going to be enough room to do it. And the last thing, this was a big thing that was really confusing folks, is as we were looking at open enrollment, there was sort of differing opinions on transportation. If I live in El Dorado and I have been accepted as a non-resident student in two-five-nine, how do I get there? Does El Dorado have to bus me over to a different school? Does Wichita have to send a bus out to get me? Ultimately, where we landed on this was unless there is some other legal requirement, not in this, say you're a special ed student and your IEP requires transportation, that sort of thing, you would not be required to be transported by El Dorado or by Wichita. If you want to go to a different school district, then you need to make transportation part of that plan on you. So that kind of cleared things up for both the receiving and the giving school districts to know exactly where they are. So this was the mega bill. This was really huge. It was signed last week. It is in law. It will become law probably this Thursday. It's on publication of the register. So it'll likely be in here this Thursday. A couple of more pieces that I know will fix us, and the reason I brought up that this will be in law probably as early as this Thursday, House Bill twenty-four eighty-nine was a cleanup to a bill that we passed last year as well, dealing with the disposal of real property that's owned by school districts. Last year, we passed a bill that said any any real property owned by a school district that is to be sold, the state gets a first right of refusal. We look at DeSoto, where they're building the Panasonic plant. DeSoto had a maintenance shed that Panasonic and some subcontractors really wanted to buy. We need a place. It needs to be close. We'd like to buy it. They tried to buy it. Their lawyer said, well, you can't sell it until next January when the legislature comes in because they have to exercise or deny their first right of refusal, and they can't do that until they're back in Topeka. So we changed it this year. They said, okay, if we try to sell a building, June, July, you don't have to wait until January. You can apply to the LCC, which is the Legislative Coordinating Council. That's made up of the leadership of the House and the Senate, and they have a forty-five-day window to make that decision. They can either say, yes, we want to buy it, or they can, on behalf of the legislature, said, no, go forth, do whatever you want to do, sell the building. They also applied this now, since the maintenance shed is the one that caused the issue, just to attendance centers. So if you've got a bus barn and somebody wants to buy the bus barn to turn it into a mechanic shop, you can sell that. But if it's a school building, you still have to go through this process. And in committee, they added something that said that a district may not deny the sale or lease of an attendance center based solely on the idea that whoever was purchasing the school building was going to turn it into a non-public school. So you can base it on funding, you can base it on timing, you can base it on any other things. You can't deny the sale or lease on that based solely on the fact that the building could be used as a non-public school. The other thing to watch over the next couple of years is you'll remember last year, we created a special ed funding task force. That funding task force met once, I think, January fourth of this year. That task force, after its one meeting, has now been rescinded and has been replaced by a larger overall education funding task force. For those of you who who don't know, I think most of you do, beginning in tw- or actually, June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven, our current K-12 funding formula sunsets, and it's entirely high-density, at-risk, waitings, everything, twenty-twenty-seven. So definitely write that one down in your calendar. So between now and May of twenty-twenty-seven, we either need to write a new funding formula, we need to tweak the existing one, or we need to eliminate the sunset on the existing one. The tweak is probably the most likely thing, but there's going to be a lot of discussion, and this task force is going to be the group that actually determines when and how this formula is going to be rewritten. So you'll look, it's a pretty legislative-dominated committee. There are quite a few legislators on the committee and then a number of legislative appointments on the committee as well. The State Board of Ed does get to appoint five folks, a member of the board or their designee, a parent, a teacher, a rural superintendent, and an urban superintendent. And then we have a number of ex-officio members there. One of the big complaints with the getting rid of the SPED task force is we had a lot of really designated experts within the special education world. And a complaint about the new task force was if they're going to talk about special education as well, shouldn't we have somebody on there who understands that? So they did at sort of the last minute, put the State Department of Education Special Ed Deputy Director as an ex-officio member on this committee. So you'll see how significant of a bill that was. There ended up being a lot of stuff in Senate Bill three eighty-seven. I'm sure there'll be some questions about it, if not today, another day. But I have taken up probably more time than you intended on me taking up already today, and I will, I think, leave it there. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So one thing I forgot before we opened up to questions for the board. For our legislative agenda, that we we've accomplished, you know, some things that we had tasked, you know, Sean to do. One is the virtual funding, one is special education funding, the blended learning to provide opportunities for families. And I'll put you on the spot because I forgot to put this in your presentation, but fixing capers was another piece of our agenda that didn't happen this session. So could you speak to maybe what, why it didn't, and then is there a future for that fix?
Well, why it didn't is a really big broad, right?
We can skip that if you want.
All the politics of that. Why it didn't is because it's expensive.
Yeah.
As we moved to capers tier three a few years ago, away from traditional capers, we did it because we were in a pretty big budget crunch, right? Capers is expensive. But what we have learned since moving and creating a new capers tier is that the reason it was expensive is also the reason we were able to keep good and qualified teachers, administrators, but 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 look beyond that, beyond schools, right? County and city employees, state employees, KDHE, you name it, the full breadth of it. And since we did that, I believe in twenty-fifteen, I apologize if I get that year off, but it's pretty close to that, we have seen a noticeable increase in churn, in turnover, because that capers tier is not of a level and perhaps a generational thing, right? We talk all the time about Gen Zers not thinking about a forty-year pension the way, you know, folks who maybe took a government job in the sixties did. But we've seen a tremendous amount of churn and difficulty in retaining qualified employees. There were a couple of options this year. There were a few bills that were discussed that would have simply moved everyone back into the old caper system. That is about a three-hundred-million-dollar push, I think, just to correct that seven or eight-year move. And so then at that point, that wasn't tenable, right? We're looking, trying to pass a tax plan and a budget. We're not looking at three-hundred-million dollars in one-time money. How do we whittle that down? The politically popular thing is whittle it down to say, teachers. Teachers are positive. Everybody loves teachers. We'll move just teachers back into the original capers tier. That does help teachers. It does not help quality administrators, your other staff, healthcare staff. It also doesn't help city, county, state. And so what we saw from a number of organizations is we recognize that it's a problem. Let's not fix it for one group, but not everybody else, because that really just creates more of a haves and have-nots. Let's fix it for everybody. Let's do it in a really thoughtful way. Let's not try to do it on the fly where we have to come back next year and fix seven things that we messed up unintentionally. And so long and short of it, that's why we didn't fix it this year. There have been a couple of interim studies. There was a plan this year to try to pull to something together. That committee ended up not meeting. I think it is something we will see addressed in the next biennium as we look into twenty-five, twenty-six. But first and foremost this year, tax was the number one thing they wanted to do. And until we pass the tax plan, which we did in January, then in March, then in April, we don't know how much money we have to address these other issues. So when they get a tax plan done, hopefully in this special session, when we show up January thirteenth next year, we will know how much money we have, how much money we don't have, and can begin to craft a plan to fix those types of issues like the capers issue.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's it's important for us, you know, we support the moving of teachers from tier three to tier two, but we really support moving everybody from from tier three to tier two. And logistically speaking, we had some concerns because the, when you get into how you define a teacher in our system, that can be, there's all sorts of ways you could define that. It could be really problematic for just the logistics of this one's in tier three, this one's in tier two. So I would imagine we'll keep that on our legislative platform for next year. It's an important issue, but I just, because it didn't make the cut, I wanted to bring it up. And some of what Sean does is stop things as much as start things, right? Our legislative agenda is about starting some things. Stopping a more significant reduction to the M HIT program was positive. We were in direct communication with that. Stopping the, you know, just going straight to current year enrollment, which would have been a pretty significant, those would have been big budgetary hits this year. So we were able to stop or at least negotiate something less bad, right? Ultimately, the virtual funding was a win, and then I think with special education, it's at least headed in the right direction. So I'll stop talking, and if you guys have any questions, you can do that now.
I have another question.
Melody?
Wonderful, thank you.
You want to put your mic down?
Now.
Oh, there's, oh, everybody's mic now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So a couple of questions. Let's start with the funding formula that's going to be sunsetting in twenty-seven. Is that directly tied back to the Gannon decision or no?
Yes. And I say that with a little bit of an asterisk. Nothing in the Gannon decision said that this funding formula is the only one that works. We packaged this funding formula, took it back to the courts and said, how about this?
Right.
And they said, that'll work.
That's it.
So we know that formula meets the court's mandate. As we begin to pull pieces out and push new pieces in, it begins to open up the question. So I think the reality is, without going into a legal decision, because I don't get to make that decision for the Supreme Court, the more we leave it the way it looks now, the more likely it is to get the thumbs up. The more we change it, the more likely potentially some group would try to get the court to take a look at it again. Is that vague enough?
It does.
Tried to dance.
And so the legislature will have to make the decision in terms of the new funding formula. And do we happen to know, well, that probably will not come through this new SPED committee, but which committee it would come through?
Well, I think what you're going to see over the next year and a half is this task force meet.
So it will be.
Begin to set some parameters, and then it will go through either the policy or the budget committees. As you know, it's up to the Speaker and the President, with a very few exceptions, to determine the committees that exist every year.
Yes.
A few years ago, we didn't have a K-12 education budget committee. That's a relatively new creation. It might go through the education committee, given its stature in terms of the percentage of the budget. It could go through the Ways and Means and the Appropriations Committees. I would also not be shocked to see for a two-year biennium, a Speaker or a President create a brand-new committee to just deal with that. So there's a number of ways that it could that it could get taken care of, but it's obviously going to, it's going to have a bright, bright spotlight shown on that.
Ultimately, it will have to be passed. It will be set in legislation.
Correct.
A bill, and then passed by both houses and signed.
Correct.
Second question has to do with a little bit more information, maybe some detail on at-risk funding, the change with the program, with the high-density, not high-density, but at-risk. Maybe it is both.
It is both.
It is both, high-density and at-risk. And is that a, the intervention is that, so is that program-related? I mean, did they actually, they actually zeroed in on a specific program and made made that recommendation and/or mandate?
So they did not zero in on a specific program.
Okay.
I think all of you are aware of the legislative post-audits we've had in recent years, looking at whether at-risk expenditures at the district level meet or don't meet the statute. The State Board of Education, the Kansas Department of Education have come out with a new at-risk acceptable program list, right? They're supposed to have a list and they have it on the State Department of Ed website. As a local board, it will be up to you to designate two cohort groups and then to pick two to four interventions to apply to those cohort groups. The theory being that if you just say, okay, there's twenty kids in this cohort group, we're going to throw forty interventions at them. If it works, which of the forty is the one that worked? And if it doesn't work, which of the ones didn't work? So they've tried to narrow that down. But it will be up to each independent local board to determine which two to four interventions to apply to that cohort group. So you in Wichita may choose two interventions to apply to Group A and three interventions to apply to Group B. In Kansas City or Olathe, they may pick completely unrelated interventions. They have to be off that KSDE-approved list, but it's a local board decision which intervention to apply. And to clear up your confusion, just on the at-risk, high-density at-risk, the reason those are both in there is you pick two cohort groups. If one of the two meets your goal and the other doesn't meet your goal, you lose the increase from your at-risk cohort, going forward in five years. If both of them fail to meet your locally set goal, you lose the increases for both high-density at-risk and at-risk. So that's why they're both in there.
It's.
And we're still trying to kind of feel out the exact details of some of these as well, because sometimes, as you know, what's in the bill text and how we interpret it and how we apply that will be a little, there's a lot more meat to kind of fill in on the skeleton.
That's wild. That's just wild.
Do you know when KSD will choose the ten districts?
I do not at the current time. That's a good question.
What was your question?
So when will KSD choose the ten districts?
Yeah.
We tend to be randomly chosen.
I mean, I would, I would, yeah, I would think.
So I'm going to, I'm going to point you to the, I'm going to point you to the, the good, the good news, bad news, right, about everything being on YouTube now, post-COVID, is that everybody's on YouTube. And in that committee, they said, well, there's really no reason to pick a really big school because there's only like two of them, three of them. Why would we compare them? Let's pick. So fingers crossed if you don't want to be that one, we might tag that YouTube and send that to somebody. But if you do want to be the guinea pig, I'm sure that they would be more than happy to make that happen. But... Sorry, Ms. Aubrey, did you have it?
Yeah, I just, I had questions along the same line Melody did of if you're setting goals and then there's dollars tied to those goals. I know the intended consequence is they want accountability. They want to see the needle move on outcomes. But if we're at risk of losing large sums of money, then the unintended consequence is we're going to be real conservative on the goals that we set. And so... And so you kind of have this weird tension there. And so I don't think, I'm going to say something without knowing everything about this bill, but it does not seem like it's going to achieve the goals that people would want to achieve with this.
In about 30 seconds, you encapsulated about two months of discussion for us. And I said, I could not in good conscience tell any board that I work for if they were in danger of losing money to set a very, you know, active goal, right? The goal is .0001% improvement to make sure we keep it. And that is probably not in the best interest of the students. Because we want to set an aggressive goal. We want to push, but possible ramifications of setting an aggressive goal is losing money. And so I think you're exactly right. I think, my fear is that it may not achieve the outcome that's intended, which is to have accountability and aggressively push to increase, you know, our Level Ones to Level Twos, Level Twos to Level Threes. That's what we want to do. Is there a better way to get there? This is the legislation that passed this year, so.
So tell me a little bit more about the cohort groups. I mean, is this like an entire, like, third-grade class across the entire district? Or is it a specific school of third grade? Or paint me a little bit more detail. It doesn't have to be super exact.
I wish I could.
Okay. That's all we know.
It is very nebulous.
Okay.
In the discussions in the committee, one of them has to be third grade, the other one has to be, I think I said...
To eighth grade, I think you said.
Yeah, up to eighth grade. So one of them wherever, and one of them third grade. And they picked the third grade because they wanted to make sure you hit your various testing levels, right? So that you had a before and an after. We really don't know what two cohort groups means. Is that in Healy, Kansas, which had 19 kids last year, we have to pick two cohort groups? And in Wichita, which has 47,000 students, we have to pick two cohort groups? Or is that two cohort groups per building? Or is that two cohort? There's a lot of unanswered questions that the K S D E is trying to drill in on. And there is not a specific number. It was oftentimes in committee talked about 10 to 20 kids. Is that 10 to 20 kids that are of a, I mean, we're trying to apply two to four definitive interventions to this group. Does that mean, let's assume that a student is at risk because they have English as a second language. Do we need to pick everybody in that cohort group that speaks the same native language so that we can apply, so that we know what works? Or are we just looking at ESL? So perhaps we have somebody, you know, that's, that 20 cohort groups may speak 20 different languages in a, in a school like Garden City or Wichita. And if that's the case, how do you just apply four interventions? So there's still a lot of questions there. That's the reason ultimately they did a two-year pilot with no penalty, is because we said there's a lot of things you haven't told us that we don't know how they're going to work out. And they said, okay, well, another year of us arguing and the legislature isn't going to figure that out either. So we're going to throw it to K S D E to come up with 10 pilot schools. We're going to let this thing probably be a glorious disaster, and we're going to try to fix the problems as we learn of the problems.
So then, as this is signed and written, in year three, we are having to do this and not for, with a cohort? Or would it still be cohorts that all of us districts would have to abide by?
In year three, everybody is cohorts. The only thing that would not be the same years one and two is that it wouldn't be 286 schools, and there wouldn't be the potential penalty.
Okay.
Years one and two are designed to run exactly like years one and two for everybody, just to gather that data, to try to get through it, to try to figure out how the cohort groups work. I could spend all day talking to you about the questions we had about this, because I talk about a school with a lot of mobility in students.
Yeah.
If I pick, I mean, this is a terrible joke, but there's an old, there's an old movie, like a Vince Vaughn movie, right, where they, they're testing everybody and one of the guys dies midway through, and they're like, well, that person's a zero on everything because he failed the test. Well, no, he's not here. Like, if that student is gone, does that person now count against the cohort group? Or has the cohort group just evaporated? Do we need to take another student and plug it in to keep our cohort group? We don't really know the answers to these yet.
And at the end of two years, if they decide the pilot was a disaster or did not work or did not produce the results they wanted, then they would need a separate bill to end this?
They would. They would. Without, without some alternative legislative action, this will go into effect two years from now for all 286 school districts. My anticipation is there will likely be some clarifications and some tweaks. It's possible they could leave it just the way it is. It's possible they could completely eliminate it. No, the beauty of this is no legislature gets to bind to future legislature. They can make their own changes, and we'll have potentially new legislative leadership by then even. But yeah, they'll have to make any changes if we determine there are things, hurdles that we cannot overcome.
Okay. Kathy?
Based upon the cohorts, since we're talking about that, is the state detailed on what kind of a program that has to be?
I may need a little bit more there in terms of what kind of a program.
A two-year pilot program is all it says.
Yes.
What's the program?
So the program is for them to implement, so number one...
They're going to tell us.
They're going to tell us. Yeah, they're going to tell the 10 schools.
Then we're going to have to set goals with that program, and I just want to make sure I understand this. And if we don't meet those goals in five years, they're going to take money away from the district.
Yes. We're looking, we're looking years three through seven, right? We're going down the line. The first two years are freebies because they're not going, they're only going to apply to 10 of the 286 schools. But once we get into, what is that, the 26, 27 year? 26, 27 year, it goes live for everybody, the way it's currently written. You have to choose your cohort groups, and you have to choose two to four interventions off the K S D E-approved list to apply to those cohort groups. Then you measure those cohort groups over a four, or you get one for a year at the end, five-year period on whether or not they met your local board-set goals. And if they don't meet those goals, you lose, I want to be clear when I say this, you don't lose money, but you lose the future increases you would have gotten the next year.
So can you tell me what it will look like to the state if this is either unsuccessful or successful? What is it going to look like? What is their end game?
Their end game, as stated, is to bring accountability to the system. If we have a broken at-risk system and we're not seeing kids make steady improvement, why are we pouring money into a broken system, right? So we need some accountability there, that's, local boards are making decisions and driving goals and outcomes. And if we're not seeing those outcomes, then we don't want to continue throwing money into that system. That's sort of their stated goal from committee. And the way to, to try to put some teeth into it, because, because you can't kick those kids out of school because they're not doing well, right? You need to try to make improvements on that, is to put more pressure on the board to come up with tangible ideas that drive better outcomes and improvements in those test scores in outgoing years.
So the district will be penalized, not, if the board, so this is all a board thing. This is not a student outcome thing. Although a student outcome will be the benefit of what the board is going to be told to do.
I mean, who's penalized and who's not? I don't know that I want to get into that. I mean, I think they're looking at student outcome and making sure that whatever that district is, that they are enacting policies, doing programs that result in better student achievement.
So this is a blanket...
And if they don't do that...
This is a blanket across the state, right? Every district is going to go through this.
Correct. Blanket across the state.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm going to run for State Senate. No, I'm just joking.
Well, we appreciate this rundown, and it's very difficult to go through 90-day session in the short period of time we gave you, and you did it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have any other questions, you think about it later, or he said, oh, he said that, and it didn't really make sense, reach out to Kelly or Susan, they'll get in touch with me, I'll try to clear it up.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Joseph, next item, please.
Next item under Operations, resolution to establish the Wichita Public Schools Foundation.
Do you want to... Sure. I can introduce this. So invited Susan up here to talk about a concept that we've been working on most of the year, to be honest. There's a lot of paperwork and logistics that need to happen, but kind of in the big picture, we heard a lot from the listening sessions with community, asking us questions about, well, what are you doing to make, you know, to bring in more money? What are you doing to bring in more students? What are you doing to, to work with the revenue side? You know, because we were really focused on the expense side. And this is one of those concepts. We have a number of community partners who have told us, you know, if you had a mechanism that was a little bit easier for us to donate to as far as the tax code, the 501(c)(3) authority, you know, we could, our foundation could work with your foundation. So in kind of laying the groundwork for that, we have a team of Susan and Holly Wilson and Eric Shipman and I that have been working on, well, they, I show up to the meetings, they work on it, to be honest. They've done a lot, a lot of work on this to make it happen. So I'll pass it off to Susan and Holly to walk us through it and get your guys' approval to move it forward.
Vice President Albert, members of the board. I'm pleased today to be the voice of the PowerPoint, so I will go through a few slides, and then really I'll turn a lot of the question and answers over to Holly, who's our excellent grants administrator and has been doing a lot of the heavy lifting. Mr. Shipman's in the back and obviously has been our, kind of our leader. And then we've also had Chelsea Mater with Strategic Communications involved, and various members of the StratCom team as well. So it really has been a group effort up to this point. As we typically start presentations, we do want to kind of go back to our why. Why were we considering that foundation as a, as a potential revenue resource for us? Kind of brought us to this. And again, I bring us back to our lovely image of the Pac-Man, of our wants and needs really exceeding the resources available to the district. We are a large entity, we have a large budget, but the budget does only go so far. When we cover basic needs of students, so we think building needs, staffing needs, curriculum needs, material needs, we can get, we can get to a certain extent. Beyond that, it becomes more difficult to really get to those innovative programming pieces, new ideas, how do we embed some of the really cutting-edge type of thought processes of getting to move the needle, as we talked about? How do we get there? And can we move enough of the budget to those areas? We have not been able to do a lot of that, right? Because of the increasing expenditures in other areas. And our resources are also limited by various restrictive covenants, whether they're federal, state, or some other restriction on the use of those funds. So again, going out and being creative and being innovative, it becomes a little bit of a challenge for us as we look at those different rules that govern each one of those revenue sources. And so the board, actually, if you recall, have said over really the past few years, but particularly during the discussion around closing schools, what else can we do? What else can we do related to the revenue side? And so this is the proposal we're bringing to you today, is the formation of the Wichita Public Schools Foundation. So what exactly is a foundation? A foundation is an educational, in educational terms, an education foundation is a fund, essentially, for the receipt and distribution of charitable funds given by individuals, groups, businesses, and other organizations for the purposes established by the foundation. It provides a source of revenue that can be used to enhance the financial resources available to the district. And this is a common solution. We're not the only district that has, that is looking at foundations. There are a number that exist already through the state, and there's just a few listed here. Locally, Derby has a foundation, Goddard has a foundation, and then statewide, some of the larger districts, Olathe, Shawnee Mission, Kansas City Public Schools also have foundations. The benefits, as we've kind of discussed, it enhances educational opportunities. You see the pictures actually of one of the robotics competitions. This is, this is a good example of an area that normally from a budgetary perspective, we're not putting aside money for vex robotics specifically. So we have to, we have to either fundraise or do other, you know, activities to get students able to go to these competitions. So it's this kind of educational opportunity where there's a gap in our funding availability that the foundation can come in and support those kind of activities. Supporting teachers and staff, fostering innovation, addressing those resource gaps, and really engaging the community in those conversations. What does the district need? Where does base funding fall short? And then hopefully, as we attract those investment opportunities, we're looking at long-term sustainability that can, year over year, sustain those activities as opposed to the budgetary challenges that we can find ourselves in at any given time. So that planning the superintendent discussed, we've been using district staff to support kind of the early steps along the, along the path. So we have identified four kind of superstar Wichita Public School supporters to act as founding trustees. We have obtained a federal employer identification number with the Internal Revenue Service. We are now working on an application for 501(c)(3) status, which is, a lot of charitable givers look specifically for this code section to make sure that they're, they're giving applies and conforms with this particular IRS section for charitable deduction. So we definitely want to obtain that status. And then as we kind of put forth our plan, we really looked at what time of year would be a good kind of launch for a foundation, for foundation activities. And so we started looking at kind of a June, kind of soft kickoff with kind of events as we move through the course of the year. Again, that kind of core group of founding trustees, kind of, we pulled them together along with the district staff, and we started some early work related to establishing at least the, a starting vision and mission for this foundation. So kind of here's some of the, kind of a sneak peek at some of that's early work. Again, the foundation would strive to remove barriers presented by kind of budgetary constraints that we experience every day for students and staff. And then empowering Wichita Public Schools education community by promoting equitable access. Again, removing gaps, right? We're talking about where are we not be able to meet student needs, staff needs? How can the foundation come in and support those? And it really, once it's up and running, we'll be supporting characters, but the foundation will be governed by its own trustees. It's standalone from the board, standalone from district staff. So we're, again, we're going to, we're going to cheerlead and help through the early work, and then we're hopefully going to let the board of trustees run the foundation as they see fit to support educational needs that align with the district's goals. So again, we don't want to spend a whole lot of time, and we want to make sure there's plenty of time for Q and A. So in conclusion today, we are looking for permission, a resolution from the board, to proceed with the formation of the Wichita Public Schools Foundation as a strategic investment in the future of students and our communities. The foundation can play that vital role of ensuring that all students have the opportunity to thrive and become future ready in the greater community. So we are asking the board, we are recommending that the board approve Resolution 24-2, supporting the establishment of the Wichita Public Schools Foundation. And we'll, we're just going to stop there and let you ask us some questions, or actually, ask Holly, ask Holly some questions. And we'll see what we can do to kind of get, get comfortable with the concept, and we'll move forward from there. We do have a special guest after the board takes some action, so we'll go ahead and open Q and A.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Knock.
Looking at those other school districts that have this educational foundation, how much revenue, like, have they generated?
So it's going to range across the board depending on their community that supports, but we've seen several that are in the, in the ranges of a million to 5 million a year. That's pretty common on school foundations. We probably won't see that in the first year, and we're going to need quite a bit of lift. But I would expect that with the supporting community that we have around here, that we can see some generous, some generous revenue to be able to get us started and to take us through the next few years.
Who are the four trustees?
Our board of trustees.
Yeah, like the four supporters that you guys mentioned.
Okay. So actually, we're going to hear from our chairman, he was just voted in, that's Frank Schaffner. We also have Lynn Rogers, Connie Dietz, and Kathy Bush. Those are our four founding members, and we'll continue the board process. We do want to see it to be a much larger board over the next two years, and we'll add them slowly. So that is the very beginning of our, of our board.
And then would the board, would this board have to approve the...
No. Can you...
Sorry. So would the board have to approve the vision and mission statement for the foundation, or is that something under your, under this foundation board's purview?
It's strictly under the foundation. It is separate from our BOE.
All right. That's all the questions they have. All right, that's all the questions they have, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Are these funds gonna be restricted?
Generally, foundation funds are not.
They are not, okay.
It kind of depends on the funder. We have set some provisions within our guidelines, within our actionable items that say anything that's a significant amount, we might be able to have a restricted fund that's for something specific. But in general, you want your foundation for, your foundation funds to have that flexibility.
Yes.
So that can help across the board where the needs are.
So is this something where administration will go to the Board of Trustees and say, hey, we need this? And then they go, they take off with that? Is that how that would work?
While we're still working through how the entire board is going to function, most of that will come from what our founding pillars, that's the research we're doing now, on what our funding pillars are going to be and which will support our students and staff and their needs across the board.
Okay.
So that will all, that will all be driven by our Board of Trustees to develop.
And Nock asked, who was on the Board of Trustees? Can I ask, how were they found, selected? Did they come forward?
Do you want to start?
Sure. So we wanted a core, so the Board of Trustees, I don't know if we've ever settled on a final number, but it's gonna be a lot more than four. And we really ultimately need kind of, you know, your cross-section of community advocates, donors, or members of larger organizations that, you know, can connect us to foundations. But to start with, as we developed the mission and vision, we wanted people that understood what, what schools need. And so I think, you know, three former WPS board members understand what district, you know, what holes that need filled in a big system. And then, you know, Frank is one of our biggest cheerleaders in all of Wichita and with a heart and passion for this and already works a lot with our schools. So we wanted to make sure that core set us up for success. And then our June breakfast, one of, one of our goals for the June breakfast would then be to have an opportunity to invite others who might be interested in becoming a Board of Trustees member to throw their name in the hat or whatever application process looks like, we haven't figured that out yet. But at least have an opportunity to add more people there. So ultimately, I think we want, you know, we have four, I think we want to add another four to six and then kind of have a rotation with term limits so that we kind of, you know, we don't have 12 brand-new people all in one year, that we have three-year terms and then, so we're kind of constantly adding people to the, to the mix as far as the Board of Trustees.
And maybe some of my questions are the cart before the horse and maybe Diane can answer this. Is this something where the Board of Trustees or representative will be invited to come to a board meeting to give us a report of how is this going? And then I have another question after that answer.
Yes, I think at least annually, they would come and report. The, I don't know if we've gotten the bylaws approved, we're still kind of working on the bylaws, but, but typically, like Olathe, so we sent a contingent up to Olathe to their fundraiser breakfast and we've, we, Holly's talked to them a lot, she's talked to Austin Public Schools in Texas. Typically, there's probably the superintendent, but at least some board, or some district leadership who are ex officio Board of Trustee members. So this isn't a completely independent, non-connected with the school sort of an organization. It's really about supporting the needs of the district. And really, you know, Susan says it well, that this, it fills the gaps that the district's budget can't fill. So there's certain limitations that we have with our district funds. And in the CTE world, this has been a, what we've done with legacy fund for ECA and for CTE and credentials. One of the things we can't use district funds for is to provide something for a student that the student can take with them. So a college credit, a credential, a CNA, you know, scrubs, uniform, right? Those, we can't, we can't buy things and just give them to kids as, we can't do that with district funds. So the foundation can fill that hole and they can provide college credit, tuition, you know, for college credit if they want, the cost of credential test if they need to, et cetera, et cetera. So it's really not about taking the place of anything the district is doing.
Right.
It's really about coming alongside and making sure those barriers that our kids have that are unique to Wichita, that they can't, some of our kids can't afford the $40, you know, uniform. That's where the foundation can fill that gap.
So we continue to have programs with our other entities in addition to the foundation. Has Wichita ever had a foundation like this before, 259?
So we have, we have funds at the, at the, at the Wichita Foundation. We started Education Edge, we are going into our, I believe, 22nd year. We have funds there that oversee fine arts, athletics, and mini-grants. So when you see things about Education Edge, when we're out giving grants, when we're doing those kind of things, those are foundation funds and that was started here.
They are or they are not?
They, those are foundation funds, yes, yes. There are funds that the foundation oversees for us. So when we come to the board and ask for funding, basically, we have 50,000 in grants we want to give out. We come to the board, we request it, and then we go to their board and we request the money from their board as well. So those are our funds, they're just managed by them. It's been a very good process, it's actually a great catalyst for us to move into this realm. We know we have a lot more needs across our district that are just not met by athletics and fine arts and mini-grants. We have a lot more out there. So that's a great basis for us to get started. It's been great, it's worked great, and we don't plan to make any changes. But this allows us to create our own foundation that we can really meet the needs of our students and what they, what they are needing out there. Over the last five to seven years, we've, we've seen a lot of grants that we've had to pass on, we've seen a lot of donations we have to pass on, we have to, we see a lot of that that we just can't take advantage of because we are a school district and whatever that relationship might look like. So this actually opens the doors for us and lets us help our kids a little bit more.
Is there a marketing strategy for the foundation to let the community know about it?
There will be.
Okay.
We're so early Kathy, I'm sorry, I'm very tenacious, I'm sorry.
And truthfully, I mean, I, kind of teasing, but I mean honestly, we really felt like we have gone, we've put enough things in place, now it's time for you all to formally say, we are okay with this as a board before we go, before we go any further. So the breakfast will really be our, our launch of our marketing campaign as far as donations and logo and all that kind of stuff. Yep, good question.
Thank you.
Melody?
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say thanks again to both Holly and to Susan. I mean, we've talked about ideals and things that we as a board and as a community want to see happen. Positive things happen for our district and how there was definitely a need for additional funding stream. And so to go out and grasp what it is that we've probably already started, I'm listening to you Holly with the Wichita Foundation, and then to build on that, I think is just a wonderful, new, exciting chapter for USD 259, this path that we are going to be able to blaze for the largest school district in the state of Kansas. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm ready to see some very positive things happen. And I know we're going to be introduced to the new president of that board. So looking forward.
And with that, is it time for us to make a motion?
I believe so. Is there any other comments before a motion? Nock?
I just had one quick, one more quick question. So with the other foundations, I'm assuming like there's like a, like an employee of that foundation? So I mean, this is probably like way too premature, but you probably know where I'm going with this, yeah?
Yes, you're talking about staffing and how we plan to, there will be a slow and grow staffing model process that will be able to take on the work of those of us that are doing it now. We all believe in this, we want to do it, we want to see it to come fruition. So eventually, we will see that kind of executive director kind of position like you see in other foundations, whether it's for education or anything else, they have an executive director that kind of drives that business and some supporting staff that will, that will help them. That is a long-range plan that we will get to. But yes, there is an eventual plan for staff to be able to do this work and take it on.
Okay, thank you.
So I would like to make a motion that the board approve Resolution 2024-2, supporting the establishment of the Wichita Public Schools Foundation.
And I have a resounding second.
Okay, it's been moved by Julie and seconded by Kathy. Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. And Holly?
With that, I would like to bring Mr. Frank Schaffner up to the podium. Frank is president and CEO of Credit Union of America. He's probably a face that everybody in here knows and is used to seeing as we do our work. Mr. Schaffner was voted in as our chair, our chairperson of our trustees, Board of Trustees, and I'd like to give him a few minutes to address.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
You are a familiar face.
A little bit, a little bit. Thank you all for allowing me to come and just spend a minute or two with you. If you forget my last name, you can just remember Frank. If you call Credit Union of America, ask for Frank, I'm the only one there. It seems to work. Like, like, like the Holly was talking and Susan there, the why, I'm a big why person. Why, why I'm here, why I representing Credit Union of America. And I, I would start by just saying on the personal side, my father-in-law, my wife, my two kids, all are East High graduates. So we're very familiar with East High. Two little grand, grandkids that live here in Wichita, they're Hyde Beagles. So they're over there with Kelly's kids as well. So we're, personally, we're vested in 259. And on the work side, I guess you'd say, if y'all don't recall, we were started by a teacher at East High School in 1935. We try our best to be a good partner with 259. And what can we do? How can we remove barriers for kids, for educators? Whereas my little granddaughter would say, we try to remove the scratchy pieces, right? How can, how can we help educate, you know? And so that's, that's what we do. When I was approached about the foundation, I, I thought about that and I thought, well, this is a, to me, a really, really good way to move people from pointing and watching on TV and saying, oh, these things are going wrong with the school system, to actually doing, you know, let's do something, let's don't just watch you all on TV make these difficult decisions that you have to make. How can we, as a community, support and really get behind to make 259 the, the school system? Because we all agree the stronger the school system, the public schools here is the better for the community. So, you know, I've been with Credit Union of America 30 years and sometimes I think about Richard Gere when he says, I have no place else to go. But I, anyway, I don't know why it came to my head. So, but anyway, thank you, we'll do our best. I work with some great people here, you know, the trustees as well. I think we're gonna do some really good things. But like Kelly says, let's, let's get the, let's get the community behind us and make some real positive changes for the school district. So thanks for letting me be involved in this, I appreciate it.
Thank you Frank. I think Frank, you're the perfect person for this very first foundation board chair and we appreciate everything Credit Union of America does for not only the Wichita Public Schools, but support public education in general. So thank you very much Frank, you're perfect for this job.
And they're a great, great bank, that's my bank.
They're, they're a great credit union, yes. Okay, I think we're ready for the next item, Joseph?
Next item, first review, proposed update of district policy.
I'm sorry Joseph, go ahead, one more time.
First review, proposed update of district policy.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we've got a first review, no final vote today, but if anybody has any suggestions or changes they would like to see in Policy 1160, which is the Accountability and Equity Committee, and this was based off of a March 4th request from the board that we establish a committee to monitor and promote diversity and equity. You have the policy in Appendix 11. Are there any changes or concerns or subtractions you would like to make? Julie?
I just have a question of clarification.
Yes.
I didn't totally understand by the description here, how the members are gonna be identified. So if there could just be some clarity, I know like there was comment about each board member having, submitting three candidates for consideration, but then it seemed like there was gonna be a selection committee that picked out of a large pool of people. So I, I'm just trying to understand how the members will be.
Absolutely. Kelly, do you want to address that?
Sure, I think it's both of those two things. I mean, I think that, so Dr. Polite is gonna chair the committee pending approval and, you know, he will be the one that, you know, kind of creates the membership list. But we're, I think the idea is that each board member, if you wish, you know, can submit names that would be under consideration. And then from those, somewhat depending on, you know, the topics that the committee could be working on at the time, would, would be able to determine that membership, so.
So then would it be up to us to reach out to our three and have them submit applications? Or would we give names and Dr. Polite would contact them? I mean, how would that, how would that work?
I don't, I don't know that we've necessarily figured that piece out, the mechanism. I think it's more of the second, that you, you know, could submit names. These people I know in the community know a lot about blank, blank, and blank and so I think they'd be good representatives for this based on the, on the topic.
But you'll, you'll let us know more about that as we move along?
Yeah, I think the idea would be that we, we create the committee, then we, that committee would create bylaws for how they would operate as a group. And Dr. Polite can jump in at any time and, you know, if this isn't right. But to maybe outline term limits, to maybe outline focus and goals and that sort of thing. That that would be done, you know, kind of at the committee level, not at the board level.
Got it.
There is a process, if we, assuming that we approve the first reading and get a final approval at the next meeting, the next step is the bylaws. And it's the bylaws that will determine a lot of the determination of the actual policy.
I do have just a, just a comment.
Absolutely. Melody, go ahead.
And that is, once again, it's a thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Stan for putting this, moving this forward again. Secondly, it's, this is going to be, I think, a key committee that we engage again because we're starting, we're continuing our processing with the master plan. And with that, we've heard a lot, we've heard a lot in terms of the two presentations that we've had of how important equity is across the board, so, and accountability. So to, to get this started, to redo what was already in our policy, I think is, is gonna be a benefit. So I'm looking forward to the second reading, I'm hopeful that we will all be able to support this.
Thank you Melody.
Thank you.
Okay, no action ness on that today. And as, as of all cases, when we have a first review of policy, please do not consider the item closed until we actually get to the actual second reading. So speaking of that, Joseph, the second reading of Policy B, proposed update to the district policy on 6345. Go ahead and announce it, sorry.
Yeah, second review, proposed update of district policy, 6345.
And this was an administrative adjustments we made under first reading where we changed some wording on selected criteria for honor roll and honorable mention and we had different levels, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, it takes into account the weighted GPA.
That's right, correct, thank you. So are there any other questions or concerns about that? Because this will be the final reading of this policy. If not, I'd move that we adopt that policy. Moved by Stan, seconded by Diane, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. At this point, I'd like to make a motion that we make an addendum to the agenda that we add a report from UTW and the Service Employees Union, if they are here at this time. And we'll do that before we move into executive session. First off, is there any objection to adding that to the agenda? If not, I move that we add a report from, and I do not see SEIU. So I'm just gonna make my motion that we add a report from the UTW to this agenda. All those, moved by, moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. So at this time, we will have a report from the UTW, Katie, or Mike, or both, whatever you guys end up deciding. Thank you Sean. I'm sorry, it's kind of weird.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Welcome, Katie.
Welcome, or, thank you. Good afternoon, BOE President Reeser, Vice President Albert, distinguished BOE members, and Superintendent Beilefeld. I just wanted to start off by saying heartfelt congratulations to our 2024 graduates and their families. This is such a special time. I know our teachers are incredibly proud of all their students and eager to celebrate their achievements. We are officially in the last four days of school, and this is always a bittersweet week. While there's excitement for a well-deserved break, there's also sadness as we bid farewell, farewell to the students that we have watched grow every day throughout the year. This year has been particularly challenging for educators with the budget cuts coming, job changes, and the school closures. But despite all those obstacles, our teachers have consistently showed up with smiles on their faces, bringing positivity and commitment to their classrooms. They've been steady, the steady support our students needed, always there to lift them up and keep them motivated. As we reflect on the 2324 school year, I want to express my deepest gratitude to our educators for their incredible hard work and dedication this year. As always, they've gone above and beyond to ensure our students continue to receive a high-quality education even in the face of adversity. Their efforts have not gone unnoticed, and we're profoundly thankful for their contributions. I'm providing each of you a copy of our recent UTW workload survey results, and I was gonna share a little bit from the first-page summary from the report that highlights the key findings and concerns from our certified staff. This survey provides valuable insights into the challenges our educators face and underscores the need for continued support and resources. The results show continued strength in some areas, including most certified staff report positive perception of the district and their school building. However, however, while these numbers are strong, there's two significant areas of concern that are present. The recent trend of improving perception of the district has been reversed. Surveys from the last several years show a consistent trend of increasing satisfaction, peaking with the results in December of 2023. The current results document a reversal of that trend. And the person that does our surveys at Wichita State said that it could be related to the presence of a ceiling effect where additional improvement is unlikely, but it also raises the questions of whether recent events such as budget shortfalls, the enrollment declines, and school closures could have triggered the reversal. So some of those cuts they're hearing about have caused some stress for our, our staff. Second, and more concerning, concerning, a majority of our certified staff reported that they perceived the district to be headed in the wrong direction. In addition, less than 50% of our certified staff support the new strategic plan. The coming months and years are pivotal moment for Wichita Public Schools as it determines how to manage aging buildings and declining student enrollment. No matter what the path forward is, we have to have support from our certified staff for the future of USD 259. It's a necessary prerequisite for the long-term success of our district and its students. In addition, there continues to be a significant gap in the perception of those who work in the high schools and those who work in elementary schools. And so we'll, we plan to look more into that with future surveys, and look at what's driving these differences and what solutions there might be. I look forward to meeting with each of you, and, well, we, Mike, too, to discuss the report more in depth soon. I also wanted to say thank you, our HR, Sean Hutzspeth, said that, I think, all certified staff have been placed now from the closures, so I know that was a huge task, and everyone is happy to know where they're going next year. So we really, really appreciate all their hard work on that, and thank you for all you do. I know this is a volunteer position, and we really, really appreciate everything you guys do, so, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Board looks forward to going through this report. Joseph, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
I move that the board recess into executive session pursuant to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for the purpose of discussing personnel matters related to a non-elected employee. The open meeting will resume in this room at, I didn't get a time. How much time do we need?
Twenty, twenty? Dan, do we need 20 minutes for this executive session, do you believe?
The open meeting will resume in this room at 1:55.
And we'll be in 1:09 down the hall.
Was there a second? Stan, was there a second to the motion?
Oh.
My second.
It was moved by Diane and seconded by Kathy to go move into executive session. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven, zero. Wichita Board of Education is back in session from the executive session, no action taken, no action needed. Joseph, next item, which it happens to be miscellaneous adjournment. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Moved by Kathy to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero, with Julie Hedrick in, in non-intenants. Okay, Kelly, when is our next meeting? Okay, June 10th, see everybody, June 10th.
It will be here a day back at 6:00.
Yes. 6:00 p.m.